Alright, so public notice of a meeting. This is the 18th. So, January 18, 2024, 30. Board of Appeals Working Group Subcommittee, consistent with the Governor's orders extending. Make sure I got this. Consistent with the Governor's orders, extending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Every effort will be made to allow the public to review and/or listen to the meeting in real time. Personal persons who wish to do are invited to click on the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number. Meeting ID 876-554-5622. Password 617798. Please use dial-in computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans for Disability Act. This location will be accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and/or language assistance for free, free of charge upon request. If you are a person with disability and require information on materials in alternate format or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town disabled coordinator, William Rinald, town engineer. As far in advances as event as possible, every effect will be made to grant you requested advance notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove any accessible barriers. The agenda for today is first a roll call. Amy?
Yeah.
Jim McBane here from the board. We're talking about Crescent Street Development for 444, 446, 448 Crescent Street. This is a meeting of the Board of Appeals Subcommittee to discuss primarily draft conditions as requested by the board and any architectural elements that also were left with the board to review. That meeting is open. So Brian?
Thank you, Ms. McBane. So I've been working on a decision which I'll go over with you. I think I have it in good order. I've got to plug in some conditions and I've got a kind of a final punch list from the zoning board on the last meeting that I want to go over with both of you to make sure we don't miss anything. Before I did that, I had Peter Sandus do some updated plans, which I think might be the final plans. And I'd like to go over those with you guys. Jim, if I can share the screen?
Alright.
You have to make me a co-host.
I don't want to share my screen.
Amy, can you walk them through it?
Yep. Go down to participants.
Under what?
Participants.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then go to the thing near Brian's name and click it. It should say make co-host.
Not getting participants to come up here.
Down the bottom?
Yeah, I'm at the bottom.
Okay, do you see participants?
On the right, I see. Or, okay, I got it, I think. Co-host, make co-host. Yes, okay.
Right. Thank you. Okay, so these were just updated last week. And I think, I think we've agreed this is the color we're going with, right?
Yes.
Agree, Amy?
Oh, yes, sorry, it didn't come through.
No problem. Alright, so. Jim, and I'm going to send this to both of you guys just so you can, you're going to meet probably again Thursday so you can have a chance to look at it better. But just to go through it. I'm going to keep going. You stop me, guys, if you want. This is the, this will be the final unit count. It's 40. He's put in the ADA units that Chip had asked for. So it's the 16 one-bedroom, 22s and 4-3s. This is, nothing's changed on the parking. We still have the 70 spaces. Want me to start?
So 11 and 12 of the ADA units. Alright.
We'll have this on your email.
You want to back up a bit, just a moment? It looks like some internal, one more up. So it looks like he's.
Showing the specs, Jim, see it?
Elevations for handicapped, I guess, yes.
ADA.
Full units, okay, yep, yep.
Whoops. Too big.
Okay.
Sorry, it keeps cutting out, so I can't. I didn't know if you just asked me something.
Oh, no, nope.
No. Just ask that we respond if there's something we don't see on there.
Oh, Brian, can you go back up a little bit?
Yeah, up to this one, Amy?
Yep, on the bottom, that looks, oh, is that the stone? It looks like brick.
That's a stone.
It's stone, okay.
Yep.
Alright, go ahead. While we're, while we're zooming through this, the one question that Chip asked was about, I think it was Chip, was asking about the retaining wall on, to the right.
Yes, I got that on my list.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Yep. And that's going to, we're finalizing the site plan tomorrow. I'll be sending that to you. And this is your materials, guys.
Yeah.
And again, Jim, you'll have this momentarily. That's it.
Okay. Alright.
Right? So I'm going to set, I'm going to send that to you guys. You can digest it and look at it. Sure you want to look at it more carefully, Jim?
And we have the sample boards down the, down the building department.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I had to ask Gail to hold on to them, too. She wanted, thought maybe she could get rid of them. I said, nope. That ain't happening. You're going to need to zoom in here.
Yep, no problem. And I'm sorry I didn't send this to you sooner. I've been working on this. It's, you know, Dave kind of, the chair kind of locked me into working with somebody else's decision because he wants to kind of keep the 40Bs similar.
Yep.
Which I think is smart, so I'm not blaming him. I think that's very smart. It's just, it's a little bit hard for me because I'm not used to work on somebody else's template. And I'm not, you know, you guys will see this. I'm not going to bore you with it. But this, just to go, you know, real quickly, that it's 40 units. Okay, which is important. 16, 1, 22, 4, 3. 25% of the units, 10 units will be restricted as affordable. Okay? This just gives the specs and location of the property, etc. This talks about the application being filed, the notice of the public hearing. Public hearing took place. It hasn't closed yet, so I've left that open. Board did not invoke any safe harbor. We talked about that early on and you determined there wasn't any. I've given extensions to the board, so we'll plug that in, whatever the final extension is. So you have not gone over your time limit.
Yep.
We've submitted supplemental materials. This just identifies us as the applicant's representatives. These will all get plugged in. I'm finalizing the site plans with, with Engineering Alliance tomorrow and then the architectural plan. So these all have to be plugged in. The landscaping plan. We're finalizing the operation and maintenance plan. You know what we intend to do here, guys, is it was really, and I can do it. Do you think we need a construction schedule? I think we do.
I think so.
You know, that's always a question, but I'd rather err on it than not because I know Jack always thought it was ridiculous. But on the other hand, I think we need something. So if there's any conversation in the future, basically have something to go back to, to start, start with.
So yeah, so I don't, I didn't show that we had done one, so.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think that, you know, we all give them particularly these days. Basically, we know probably they won't stick with it, but it gives us an idea of, once they start, when they think they'll be finished. It's not so much when they start as to when, how long it's going to take. So I'd rather see it in there. So if, if we have to talk about it later, we have it.
I agree, but I, you guys don't remember us doing that, do you? I didn't find anything.
I don't remember, no.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think we, we got to that level of conversation because the conversation's been mostly about architecture.
That's right.
Landscape, so we are now down to the final nits and nats.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Okay, so then this is just all the other information that's part of the record. I had Gail email me today. Everything that's been submitted. Because I want it, I wanted those, Doc, you know, every, everything that we'll reference. So I'm going to supplement this to make sure we didn't miss anything in the file.
Okay.
And I'll forward those emails to both of you from her. Alright, that way you'll have it too, when your computers.
Well, I'll look, also look at my file like, like normally do and check it out.
Yep. And these are just the town department letters and I probably got to supplement this a little bit, depending on what Gail sent me.
I generally don't have copies of those until near the end, but I do have copies of the other documents that are engineering or design documents.
And this just talks about how we made changes to the projects and we reduced the number of units from 56 to 40.
Yep.
This talks about findings of the board that were eligible through our application. The project is eligible with the site approval letter. We have site control. This just delineates what the property is, what district it's in. This says that we have not reached 10% in Wakefield. There's no safe harbor. The housing stock is needed. Public health, safety or welfare. This says it's going to be constructed by, the plans are approved and the project is going to be constructed in accordance with the approved plans. Okay. Project was modified during the course of the hearing and is now reflected on the approved plans. And this is where, you know, I just kind of have a problem with this form. I just, I just think it just becomes repetitive, but, you know, we'll go with it because it says, you know, project overview. The project described and depicted on the approved plans consists of 40 residential units. Well, we've said that like how many times, right?
Right, right, right.
But it is what it is.
Well, we could also, if you think, if we think it's a little too repetitive, we can just put a line through it and make sure the board agrees.
It doesn't, you know, it's okay. It doesn't hurt anything, Jim.
No, I understand that and it just extends the conversation.
Well, it's just, like, again, now we're talking about affordable units that, you know, what the breakdown is going to be. We said that twice, but, you know, again, it doesn't hurt. I'm getting final calculations on the building height because I think it might have come down a little bit, Jim, from when we applied based on what's happened.
Yep.
Well, I'll have that tomorrow. That's going to be plugged in. What's determining density is fine. Approved plans show two means of access to the property from Crescent Street and Crescent Hill. The parking, parking is provided on two-level parking garage on lower levels of the building along with exterior parking spaces. The parking garage contains 67 and were three service parking spaces for a total of seven, of which three are handicap accessible. Project includes a loading zone as shown on the approved plans. The TAC found that the final proposal with the conditions included reduces the impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. That was part of their report. Reconstructed sidewalks are proposed in front of the project on Crescent Hill, Crescent Street and Crescent Hill. Landscaping plan, open space. So signage, is it, is the signage that open or are we agreeing that it's just going to be what's on the building?
We don't have, well, they have, they, what else they've given us is a concept of what it would look like. Not, it was, it's in the drawings, basically. It's a concept from another project saying, you know, it's going to be a carved type of sign.
So how do you with what I said, Jim?
They haven't showed us a actual sign.
But what I put in is this, it's, I think it just gives the board discretion. The time of construction, the applicant shall submit the final design for project signage for the board review.
Yeah.
Review or should it say approval?
Yes. I just, I, that just popped into my head, Amy, too. Say at the time of construction. Or just say before any signage is installed.
Yeah.
Why does it have to be at the time of construction, right?
Right.
No, I don't think it has to be. And normally it hasn't. It's been more like halfway through the construction or something like that. While they're thinking about closing out the project, all of a sudden it's, whoops, we got to get some signage approved here.
Yeah, so we'll say it that way. Okay, there's no wetlands. Utilities are all going to be public. Stormwater meets the stormwater management policy. Project changes to address local, applicant has agreed to the imposition of the conditions of approval listed below that will address certain concerns expressed by the board, members of the public and the town departments, including concerns related to the design, parking, traffic and construction, site layout, landscaping and stormwater management system. Board finds that the conditions imposed in the following section are necessary and sufficient to adequately address local concerns. The board finds that such conditions will not render the project uneconomic, which is important.
Yep.
And then, and then I've got the waivers now. I don't know if I want to bore you with all these. You know, these are, these were the same with Tarrant Lane. They're pretty standard.
I'll look at them when you get them to me.
Yeah, it's fine. I'm just going to kind of, and some of the blanks have to be filled in, but these are all mirroring Tarrant Lane.
What backup amount? Right there. Okay, alright, you can move on. What are these?
What's that?
The list here.
You know, I, you know, when, when Renate did this, they listed everything in the book. I mean, stuff that, you know, might not even be applicable.
So do we need to get that crazy?
Well, the chair opened the door and it was on a prior decision, so I hate to not include it because then somebody could say you needed it here.
Yeah, okay, alright. Yep. Alright. Kitchen sink.
Yeah. And then the conditions. So this is, you know, verbatim, this is the affordability.
Yep.
25%. Marketing program, you can look at this in some detail. You will monitoring the affordable units again for the third time. So it's going to be. Little unit shall consist of four one-bedroom, five two-bedroom and one three-bedroom. This is all about the lottery?
Yep.
I don't know, from that, from the. I think, you know, I, this should probably say, it didn't say to that decision, but. Ergo triagreement. Sorry to make you dizzy. Beheld, I would say at applicant's expense. Right?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's implied, but. That's all run by the DHD anyways. This is all.
Well, the board doesn't control any of it.
No, local preference, what you want, right?
Yeah.
The HCD requirements have to be met. Okay, construction conditions, final approval. We have to go back to mass housing for final approval. You have to give the building inspector a copy of the decision. Construction hours, we have to meet, comply with the Wakefield bylaw. No holidays, etc. What they, what they said here is prior to the commencement of the construction, the applicant shall file with the building inspector with a copy of the board of construction management plan. That time, we're going to give a final construction schedule. Fucking plan.
Yeah, I was interested in that one.
Yep. You can, yeah, so the construction shall contain trucking plan, planned truck routes, estimated volumes, estimated truck trips.
This is not as, this is not as crushing as Tarrant, but on the other hand, they've got more property than.
Yeah.
Project done. This is almost like working in Boston.
Tax, noise and dust control. Pollution control. Aging. Traffic and parking. Fire and emergency. This is pre-construction information delivered.
Yeah, names, telephone numbers.
Demolition meeting. So this is, this is important to you guys. So final construction plans in connection with the issuance of building permits for the project. Really should be, only going to be one building permit. This is not, they have multiple buildings. The applicant shall deliver the building inspector with copies to the DPW and the board. Final construction level engineering, architectural and landscaping plans for construction of the project. Final construction plans. The final construction plan shall be in substantial conformance with the approved plans, but updated to provide construction level detail and to conform to the requirements and conditions of this decision. The final construction plan shall provide a quality and level of detail sufficient to allow the board DPW and building inspector to review the plans for compliance with the conditions of this decision, industry standards and applicable law. Now, they had had a provision that we took out, if you remember last time we met, that said, if no one objected within 30 days.
Yeah, forget it.
So I took that out.
Yeah.
Have to give a stormwater pollution plan.
There's nothing within that, though, or is it somewhere else? About review of the plans by the, by the board?
Yeah, this is it. But let me, so.
But that doesn't say anything about the board review.
Well, it says for the applicant to deliver the building inspector with copies of the apartment and the board. Shall provide quality of level sufficient to allow the board and DPW to review the plans for compliance.
How do you normally?
Alright, so let me go back to the way we've normally done it. Or Jim? It's how we normally have done it.
Zoom in.
Confirmation of compliance.
Can you zoom in?
Yep, so I think that's the language we should add. Number four. That would be the way we've normally done it on other projects.
Yeah, so.
I did want to add in for review and confirmation of compliance. Let me go back. The word says, the final, shall provide quality level of details sufficient to allow the board DPW and building inspector to review the plans. Or confirmation of compliance with this decision instead of just compliance.
But that's after, that doesn't. How do you, can add the board? Okay, alright.
What if he said this, right?
I mean, everybody's, everybody's can, everybody's got to have enough documentation to confirm basically what they, what the board has approved.
If we say this, you know, it's kind of odd the way you're saying connection with. I always say prior to.
Yes. Yeah.
Yep, that, yeah.
Yeah. Amy, can you read this?
Too small, Jim?
What's that?
The too small?
Well, I know what she's reading. She's looking at her phone, I think, don't you?
Is that better, Amy?
She's got her, she's got her mic off. Turn your mic off.
Oh, sorry. No, I can see it just fine. I can zoom in and out on my phone.
Better, Jim?
Yeah, it's better, thank you.
Okay. No, but that language better?
Yeah, yeah.
And then the stormwater pollution plan. Some of this stuff, I'm working with the Site Civil and with Bill Renaud. So some of this stuff like SWIP might go on. I think we're going to put those as notes on the plan, so they might go away.
Okay. Yeah, because they, they relate more to the contractor than they do.
That's right.
To this decision.
Property has to be clean. All debris should be removed, disposed of. Materials have to be consistent with the approved plans because Peter has materials on the plans. Jim, read this one 20, is that okay with you?
Yeah, it's a repeat, but it's alright.
Yeah, I know, it's a repeat. That's what happens with this decision. I got to go back to signage and make it, you know, again, you know. Want to copy and paste this. There's a lot of stuff that's just kind of restated.
Yeah, and I don't know whether Dave's intent would be for us to. To basically. Strip it down, so.
I don't want to do that, because then, then it becomes a, you know.
Well, it's, it's like, it's like architecture, basically, start changing the design one place. Then you lose the connections other.
Yeah, and you're afraid to take something out that, you know.
Yeah, it changes the intent eventually, you don't know it until later.
You have to give, call Teddy with ninety and give him a hard time. I just made that language consistent.
Okay.
Is there lighting on the plans, guys, or, you know, Greg had the thing have to be nice guy compliant, so I put that in.
There, there is, there are light fixtures in the architectural plan, the types of fixtures, basically.
Yeah.
So I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Isn't there something on the landscape plan, too?
Uh. I'm not sure about that.
I know, I saw it somewhere, I thought it was that, but it could have been.
Well, there's a, there's a whole second sheet, basically, that we looked at, an architecture, basically, that has about three fixtures on it.
Okay.
One is a, one looks like it's an uplight, maybe for signage or for bushes. And the other one, basically, is balcony lighting, and then there's another one that's for garage lighting.
Okay.
So. This condition on H V A C, and see how this applies to us, guys. No H V A C equipment shall be located on the roofs of the project buildings except as shown in the approved plans, that makes sense, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
We don't want anything on the ground outside around.
Landscaping has to conform to the landscaping plan. So, you know, that's fine, now, Jim, I put this in because this was something that you had.
Yeah.
Applicant will stall up to three new public street trees if allowed to do so by the town of Wakefield.
I, I would leave it at three, I'm not sure the space for three, but I would leave.
Up two, I put.
Yeah, yeah. And chip sprinkler system, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's all on the plan anyways, but. Utility work is shown on the final construction plans. Public water. Now, these D P W conditions, I think, might go away, these, I'm not, you know, but this has to stay, we've agreed to twenty-five thousand dollars to the town of Wakefield.
Yeah.
Traffic mitigation.
So, so one of the things. It's been recent discussion within the board. Is. Do we know where this money goes?
Not this money. Yeah, this was just kind of open towards mitigation, because it could be anywhere in the downtown area.
Okay.
I mean, don't forget, the T A C basically said there was no traffic problem here.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they weren't, you know, the, the lights work fine, they're just saying this is for future improvements, and, and they don't like to be handcuffed.
Well, it's, it's, it's no different than some other spaces that I've worked on, basically, Wellesley, Boston. And others, basically, where you're making contribution, because you're, because you're. Let's say stressing the system. Basically, they may need to do something somewhere in the neighborhood, I know in Wellesley, it was all about, it was all about sewer lines that were. Were leaking, basically, and they, they did it outs, beyond the project, several blocks. To fix the system, but anyway. I agree with the, the need to be flexible about it.
Yeah. So this is, we have to do an as-built plan prior to, does it make sense, Jim? Prior to the issuance of the occupancy permit, you have an as-built plan?
It's, it's a way to make sure you get it.
Yeah.
All right, it's, it's a little bit of a lever, basically, make sure you have it, and if they're, if they do it properly. They won't wait until the end, they will do it simultaneous with the construction.
Yeah.
So normally, the process is that you put out, as an architect, you put out sketches of, for changes that need to be made. Basically, because of certain circumstances, either change the way a framing happens, or some other item, and you do it continuously. And if you do it right, you do it on sketches for the field, but you've changed the documents, basically, the basic documents to reflect what's going on. So it's not, it should not, if it's done properly, it's not an imposition to the project. If they don't do it, and then they have to go back through all their files and all the stuff, and, and do that later. Then it is an imposition, but it's their imposition they caused.
Got it. So this one doesn't make any sense to me, I gotta talk to my engineer about it, we've already given a stormwater maintenance operation plan. So I don't know, maybe they didn't do it, because they said prior to issuance of C O, that they're going to submit one, we, we have.
Yeah, well, I've got a little different circumstance up there on the.
Yeah, so I gotta, I gotta, I highlighted that, just so I can talk to my engineer and Bill Reno. No occupancy permit until we've met all conditions. It just becomes redundant.
Wait a minute, as-built.
I know, that, 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 that's why, you know, I just, so you go up here. Prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the applicant should provide an as-built plan depicting the final site grades, locations of drainage, water, sewery. Sewer, locations of water pipes, as-built plan shall be provided, PDF and AutoCAD, the statement of compliance.
All right, so this is strictly site work.
You think so?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, this, wait a minute, pull it back down again, I did see architecture mentioned there. Let's see. CAD drawings prepared, stamped by professional engineers, and it'll provide. As-built certified, as-built final construction plans, see the, with the final construction plans.
Yeah.
They could be, they could be anybody's plans.
Well, the final construction plans are what they're going to give. To. The, you know, the final construction plans are basically, don't forget, those are the building permit plans.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, that is the key to the next one.
Okay, so let's go to the next one.
So, so, you know, one case they're calling for ninety days. Now, where's the one with, the, the, the one before that was the.
This now includes location of all buildings.
I don't know, this is very confusing.
It is confusing, yeah, I, I agree with you, that's, you know.
So we don't want to. We don't want to hold up the occupancy if the, the stuff is done. We do want to know where all the utilities are, and the way, the only way they're going to do that is they're going to do that simultaneously with the utilities going in.
Maybe, maybe we. As-built plan depicting, maybe we add in here, buildings, and do it all up here.
Well, what's the one, what was the one that, that you, was held on the occupancy permit?
This one here. The first one, prior to issuance of occupancy permits.
All right, so, but that's. I don't see anything wrong with the grading, the sewers, the drains, all the stuff that's. Underground.
Yeah, I mean, that stuff should be, they should be taking shots of that during construction, so.
So, so. And in order to show. They need to show within that. At least the, the outline of the building, okay?
Yeah.
So I think.
Because I think, so I mean.
The architectural, not the landscape.
This says, Jim, for example, location of drainage, water, sewer utilities, right? Drainage and sewer structures, so now let's go down to this one. Following the applicant's written request for approval, which shall be accompanied by two sets of as-built plans, show location, building structures. Utilities, drainage facilities. I mean, it's kind of repetitive.
Yeah. See, I could see two packages, one is all the site work, all the piping, all the drainage and all of that stuff. It has to be submitted. Before you get.
Why don't we, why don't we get rid of this and just put up, add buildings and structures to the one up above? I do, I'm going to send this to you, so you have a chance to digest.
Yeah, 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 because I, I need to read.
You gotta read it.
Yeah, I need to read it. Maybe just put it in red lettering or something like that, so I come back.
All right, so I'll send this to you.
You want to read it, Amy?
This just talks about process of any minor changes. And it gives you guys as a subcommittee. That's what they did on Tarrant Lane. At least just the proposed, same, this just talks about the waivers. And all conditions, compliance with forty B, the fees that we, we have to pay the fees. Transfer, if it's transferred, the process, which is part of the, the law. You can amend the decision if you want, that's up to the board. And it has to be recorded. And that's basically it, but there's other stuff that we need to. Address.
Well, you got. I mean.
As follows, so I've got to incorporate, I've got to incorporate the following in here. Now, you didn't have a mock-up panel in there, I assume you want one here, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, you don't have one on Tarrant Lane.
We will have.
So I'm going to put that condition in. I'm working on an O N M plan, which I'll, I should have for you by tomorrow.
You don't think we had one on Tara Lane, huh?
Well, that's a decision, it's not in there.
Uh, okay.
Looking on that rabbit hole, focus on this.
You know what I'm doing.
That's what I do, rabbit holes, yeah. Landscaping, prior to the C O, but allow for a bond, I think we should put that in there. No parking on surrounding streets during construction. Right, Amy?
Yeah, yeah.
And then, the other, very important, very important part of this is. That I've got to get all, how about delivery hours, you left that kind of open. You're on mute, Amy.
Why does it keep going on mute, so weird? I was thinking about that for the hours, but I don't know if this is really a way that's block it, you know, on the close grounds to school, kids can go.
Yeah, it really isn't.
It's not, yeah, they can go either down Main Street, or they can go on the other side of Crescent Street. Yeah, I think my biggest concerns is just the police station and fire department, but that's not a, there's no set time for that stuff.
So then, so then we have these, which are very important and integral to this, is that Crescent Hill parking is for residents only. Crescent side, Crescent Street side should be for residents and visitors, and then the commitment of ten visitor spaces. In perpetuity. You think, you think I should have those labeled on the site plan, the visitor spaces?
They're not on the site plan, they should be on the architectural plan.
Yeah, they should be on the plans, though.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, assumingly, they're going to have everything numbered. And, and labeled, so it's clear. And I would make sure it's labeled.
Yeah, yeah. Then the, the electronic system, which I'm going to put language in on that. And then we're doing that, we, we've agreed to do the crosswalk at our expense for the town, so that is going to be put on the plan. Bill Reno gave us specs on where he wants it, so that's going to be on your final site plan, which you're going to.
Okay, yeah.
Now, this is, that's what I have, and I also have the following list, just to, things that have to be done. We need to finalize the transformer location, right?
Yeah, they've said, they said originally it was going to be at the back of the drive.
Yeah.
Beyond those two parking spaces off from Crescent. But I don't, we haven't seen any confirmation from. From power.
Yeah, so I'm on that. And then. Greg talked about sensors in the garage lighting. Right?
For the, for the Crescent Hill.
Yeah, because the other one's buried underground, so it doesn't matter, right, Jim?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Also, it's not, it's also not a public crosswalk area.
Well, no, I'm talking about lighting, you know, sensors for the garage, so they're not lit all the.
Oh, oh, yes, 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 but that should be. Well, we don't have any electrical drawings, so I guess it's got to go in here, and it'll have to come up on electrical drawings later.
Should that be part of the O N M plan, or a condition, or both?
What do we do at one, at six-ten? Salem.
I don't know how you dealt with that.
And I'm trying to think of who had it. Does Wakefield Station have it?
No, no, six-ten has.
Do we deal with it on Bennett Street, too?
Oh, that's, yeah, that is.
Yes, I think we did.
Yeah.
Let me see what we did there, hold on.
I think it's definitely in the conditions.
Right, I'm looking, Amy, hold on. In there. It's on the plan.
Is it?
But it's not a decision, it's not in the conditions of, of Bennett Street.
Oh, it's not.
Might have been on the plan, Jim?
Could have been. Could have been on the architectural plan.
I think on, didn't, didn't the way you dealt with it on six-ten, didn't he put shades on those windows, so it didn't matter?
No. No, we had, we had sensors.
All right, hang on. Six-ten.
I did a quick scan of six-ten, but I didn't find anything, so I'm looking at the plan now.
You didn't see anything in the decision on that?
Well, I, I just did a word search, and it didn't, lighting, basically, and it didn't come up with anything. Looking at Peter's drawings now.
Yeah, there was something that happened, and it wasn't relevant, I, I, I think it was because he put shades on the windows.
No, 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 because it, we had motion detectors, basically, so the lights weren't on twenty-four seven, basically, someone walked into the space. And it changed. But I don't see anything. I don't see any highlights. For that, and it would be normally under the garage layout. And I don't see anything. There.
Not foundry, right?
What's that? What's that?
It's not on foundry, is it?
Um, well, that garage, that garage is not them. They're renting space.
No, underneath the building. The one that's already built.
Oh, that foundry, that foundry. I was thinking of Albion and Foundry. Um, I don't know.
I know that there's one of them that has it, and I just can't think of which one it is.
I'm damn sure that it's, um. I'm damn sure that it was on 610. Well, let's not, let's not, we'll, we'll check this. Put this aside for the moment. Without burning too much oil.
I thought he did something with the, with the, I thought he did something with the, with the panels down there in the garage.
No, I don't believe so. I'll ask him.
Pretty sure he did.
I don't see. I don't see anything in this his submission package. It's not gonna be in landscape. It's not gonna be a site. Could be an O and M.
Garage detail, see garage opening detail. Think. Why, okay. Limestone surround, mesh screen at window, metal window frame block, garage opening detail. It's a mesh screen, Jim. On, I'm talking about 610.
Yeah, I know, but I I still don't buy it.
Not most people gonna do that anyways. Isn't that kind of like you have to for like, to save electricity?
Yeah, yeah.
It's, who, who's not gonna want to do that? Why would you want your garage lights on all night?
No. No, it's motion, it's motion sensors, that's it. And where it's called for, I'm not sure. I, I, I'm gonna look.
Okay. Well, I'll put some, uh. Make a note on this one.
I mean, they have, in this one, basically, they're gonna have people walking to the back end through the garage to they get those units in the back. So they're gonna want sensors on those, not just for vehicles, but people.
Yeah. Then, I'm just going down my list. So then how about, how about signage? So we talked about, you know, visitor parking signs. Right? If you remember, you was aboard discussed that we wanna put something on the outside to, to to, you know, kind of make people know you shouldn't go down Crescent Hill, no visitor parking down there.
Yeah, we, we talked about signage on the door, on the back of the door, or somewhere, basically, where in fact people notify, particularly tenants. They were notified, basically reminded that this is a non, that this is a non-guest area. And that was on the second level. I, I, you know, we talked a little bit about doing something on the outside, but I don't think it could be big enough for that. But they're not gonna have, they're not gonna have access anyway, cuz they're not gonna have a, a device to get in there. On the other, so, on the other hand, it might be worth having a sign.
Here's a site plan, Jim. You guys see that?
Yeah.
So you got the left-hand turn only out, which was what was wanted, right? But, you know, one thing, what you guys talked about at your last meeting, and I made a note, and I think, you know, we as a, you as a subcommittee should talk about it, was if there should be something, if there should be some type of sign here that says, you know, no visitor parking off, you know, on Crescent Hill or something like that. That was discussed, right, Amy, to kind of like teach people, don't bother going up here.
Right. And then maybe have a sign in the other corner that says, uh, visitor parking with the arrow.
We can, we can put a condition that we agree to, to, you know, revisit with the board directional signage as it relates to visitor, non-visitor, and delivery. And deliveries, cuz it might be something that we wanna put out there for deliveries, too. So if a new Amazon truck driver is coming, he's not like circling the building, how do I get in here?
Well, you got that. What do we do with that, that driveway that's just beyond the building? That's the, that's the drop-off one, and that's.
Right here is where they're gonna, they're gonna go, yeah, that, that's where they're gonna go in and make their deliveries.
Yeah. So there has to be some sort of street sign at that area.
I, I don't, I think we wanna I, I think I should condition it that, you know, that you reserve the right to require signage. We, we need to go back and talk about it.
Well, certainly, we'll understand it better once we, once this place is constructed to some degree.
And where you might wanna put it, to not make the property look car.
Yeah, it's like, it's like planting, basically. You move things around a little bit, but we're gonna want some signage, basically, for drop-offs and deliveries and guest parking type of thing. So I'd agree with you to deal with it. Instead of trying to assume something at the moment, let's deal with it in the fact that once we.
Directional signage.
Directional signage, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And then, I'm going down my list, okay? Granite curbing. So, you know, I gotta make sure that's on the plan. I'll do that with my site surf, my site civil guy tomorrow. And then retaining wall, you wanna make sure there's a spec on the plan that the stone is gonna match the foundation stone, right?
Right.
That's what I had for my notes.
All right, you hit the ones I had. As well.
I miss any, Jim?
No, no, those are the ones I had. I looked at my list, basically, and those are the ones I could come up with.
Yeah. I'm, I'm really particular to do this, right? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we can meet again on, on Thursday. I'll get you, I'm gonna send you what I've, what I've done so far.
Yeah, and I should look over the, once you get that list from Gail.
I'm gonna send you the decision I wrote that using Tarrant Lane, but then I'm also gonna send you my little list of conditions that I have, that I showed you.
Yeah.
All right, and then, and then I'm gonna send you Peter's plans. That I just put up on the screen.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Yeah, and I'm hoping by Thursday.
Now, you got, you said you're talking to the civil about a few things, so there'll be that plan as well.
Yeah, well, I gotta, you know, I had a problem with him because his plan didn't match Peter's plan as far as the units, like he had different number of one bedrooms and two bedrooms.
Yeah, well, he's, uh.
Yeah, yeah. And I need his, I need him to do the final calculations, the setbacks, height, all that stuff.
Yeah.
Which I've been asking for. So, you know, I think I think what we'll do, if it's okay with you guys, let's revisit where we are on Thursday. And see if we'll be in a position to give something on the full board on Friday. If we're not, you know, I wanna get this done as fast as everybody, but I, I don't wanna not do it right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. No, I'm fine with that.
And I at least wanna be able to say to the chair, we've met twice, you know, which we will have, cuz that's what he wanted. And, you know, none of us are comfortable giving the board an inferior work product.
Right, right. And, and they're gonna have to go through it themselves, and this is gonna be a very long piece of paperwork, basically.
Yeah, it is, but I'm gonna, I, I really think it's important for you, you guys to be comfortable with everything before it goes in. So we're not like doing what we're doing now in front of the board.
All right, but I can see Greg, I can see Greg, basically, you know, picking up bits and pieces, maybe here or there, whatever.
Well, yeah, I mean, all the board members are very diligent, they're smart, and they, you know, do their job, so you know, I, I'd rather make sure that we dot the i's and cross the t's on everything, that all these items that have been mentioned.
Yeah.
So let's see where we are Thursday night, and then we can make a decision.
All right, all right.
Is that okay, Amy?
Yep, that sounds great.
Amy's providing dinner.
Okay. I'll email, I'll email, I'll email that stuff to you guys right now.
Okay, perfect.
Good. All right, so we're done?
Yep, and I'll see you on Thursday at 6:30.
Perfect.
All right, so. I'm gonna close this meeting. At 5:36. We're closing the meeting, and attendees of the meeting are Amy here.
I'm here.
Jim McFane and Brian McGrail. Closing the meeting at 5:36 on Crescent Street. Thank you for your help.
Right.
And we'll, I guess, be meeting again on Thursday at 6:30.